So the closest strike was put on.
Okay.
But they know where to go.
We're gonna start the meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and fifteen. And this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're meeting in the selectman's office at Cohasset Town Hall. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We, as you can see, we're down two members proceeding. And certainly with Diane, it's possible that she may not attend at all. She's dealing with some unexpected appointments that ran later than she anticipated. Excuse me. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have public comment?
Yes, you do.
Have you already, have you signed in?
I have signed in. Yes, I have. I've signed in and asked to speak about this Friday's nine eleven ceremony on the common. So just here to remind the board that at nine o'clock, promptly at nine o'clock on Friday morning, there will be the annual nine eleven remembrance ceremony on the common. So same as last year, clergy, taps, ringing of the bells, all of the things that we normally do, followed by a collation at the fire department for all people that attend the ceremony. So nine o'clock Friday, as I said promptly at nine o'clock. I'll just leave it at that, followed by the collation sometime around nine thirty.
Thank you very much. Collar guard leaves from here at eight thirty?
Collar guard leaves from here about, we must be here about nine forty or so, excuse me, eight forty or so.
Okay.
And we leave from in front of us here to my shop at eight fifty-five, so that we can stop the service promptly at night.
Okay. Do we know the chief?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Is there any further public comment? All right then. Moving on to agenda item number two, the appointment of a fence viewer. Chris, you have, if I recall, one applicant or?
We have one current fence viewer and we have an applicant to fill another open position as fence viewer.
Okay.
And that applicant is Annette Sartre. Here's application before you.
All right. Folks, do we have conversation on this?
The public might want to just quickly be reminded about a fence viewer is. Do you want to?
What, you want me to tap dance again? Is that what you're saying?
You did so good this morning.
Actually, I would, I would actually like to know what the official duties of a fence viewer are.
They're, they're there to settle boundary disputes effectively.
Okay.
In this day and age, most people go to lay in court or deal with their deeds. But historically, the fence viewer was the person that should go to before you went to court. And that position has stayed. Now, most people, you know, the old life, good fences made good neighbors. Well, that's what they did. They were there to make sure the fence was proper in the right place and everything was good. They can still do those things. I mean, they can sell assists. You could always go over them and go to lay in court or court. But I don't know that we've had much call for them in recent times, but.
Could've saved us a few dollars if they had been called.
Yeah. This is all about, this has nothing to do with, by the way, with walking the boundary, which is something else that the selectmen need to do as the surveyors of the boundary. You have to do that from time to time. So, but then when it gets a little bit cooler, maybe we should go out and do a walk along the situable border, make sure they have them crunched.
Thank you, by the way. So just to be clear on this, that it's a position that still could be called into, called into a circumstance, but typically is more ceremonial these days than not.
At this point in time, yes, it's mostly so.
All right. Anything further?
Get your list up here.
All right. Well, in that case.
Point, Annette Sartre, the fence viewer.
Go ahead.
A second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's unanimous. All right. The next item on our agenda is, is a overview from the Affordable Housing Trust represented by Taffy Nottingale.
Thank you.
Or would you rather have your full name?
I'm pretty sure.
Is it good enough?
It looks like a stain.
Sorry? No, I wasn't like it.
Yeah.
I'm not bashful.
So Helen Nottingale, Taffy Nottingale, thirty-sixth Atlantic Avenue, chairman of the Cohasset Housing Authority.
Russell Benetti, twenty partner half, CPC.
Thank you.
So, we are here because the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority asked me in the winter last year to work with the selectmen to try to reactivate the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a, was created years ago, is on the bylaws of the town committee in existence with no membership at the moment. At that time, we wrote a letter to Chairman Kennedy and also met with her and Chris Senior and with the representative of CPC to talk about what might be the best way to approach trying to reactivate that group. The Housing Authority has as part of its charge to try to work toward making housing available for all residents of Cohasset, not only elderly, which is what people think of that we do, but also disabled, veterans, and low-income families. And the CPC has also expressed in the recent years a strong interest in creating some affordable housing with the money that they have earmarked for that. It seems like a reasonable step would be to seek new members for the housing trust because it already exists. These people are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and I believe the bylaws of the trust, which Chris has, stipulate certain job descriptions, like an architect.
Lawyer.
To be on that committee. So this committee, our idea is that this committee would take a fresh look at the possibilities for creating small clusters or single-unit reasonably priced housing in town. We're not talking about dreaming of another Avalon or any such thing, but we've been approached by Habitat for Humanity, and we've been approached by families that are looking for. We used to talk a lot about Cohasset Affordable. There definitely is such a thing. I'm not necessarily talking about low-income housing. So that's, I guess, our idea was that you put out requests for people who are interested in committees for other boards, and I think that's the route we need to go for this and see if there are any applicants who are, you know, expressing an interest in it.
I just want to be clear, Taffy, this is for the trust or for the authority? Are they, are they two different entities?
No, no. Oh, totally.
Yeah, okay.
This has nothing to do, Cohasset Housing Authority is a state agency.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust is established in the bylaws of the town of Cohasset to look at ways to create affordable housing in the town. It could necessarily, I mean, it could have nothing to do with us. I think ideally we'd have a representative from the Housing Authority on the board. I think there are people on the board who would be interested in applying for it. And in the end, if something were built, the Housing Authority could be employed to run, you know, the finances, not the finances, but like the rental, you know, however it's seen.
Management?
Yeah, management of it. But that would just be total, that would be totally up to however the setup.
Chris, what, what does the trust call for?
I have to, I was printing a copy of the bylaws and they're not in front of me now.
Okay.
It's a, its mission is again, is to explore opportunities. It wasn't apparent to do anything other than explore and to potentially hold land. I think it was, it was set up to do that as well. The last, the last group was a fairly broad cross-section. There were people who were planning housing, there was a selectman representative, and that was back in eight, oh eight or oh nine?
Oh, eight, oh nine, it was solved, yeah.
Well, that's what was started, I guess, the affordable housing.
Well, before, well, the trust actually came into existence. So there's a committee before that.
Right. And then it formed into that, right. And one of the things that, that, because that the whole, the committee's whole purpose is to explore affordable housing opportunities, they would then be able to partner with other groups. CPC actually has a, one of its reasons for being is to help support affordable housing. Obviously, the Housing Authority's mission is to run affordable housing. But then this, this entity was there to, I guess, I guess the best way to call for it would be to research and advocate affordable housing.
Okay.
That had, that kind, that was its purpose. And it had, you know, and the partners, a funding partner clearly would be, one potential funding partner would be CPC, and another potential funding partner would be the, well, I mean, another partner would be.
Yeah, another partner, yeah.
Yeah.
Housing Authority. And then it had, I believe, an architect, a lawyer.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember that this, I can print it back out, but it's on, it's on the lips, if you can, it's in the bylaws.
I think going back, I remember back in two thousand and eight, the trust was created in place of municipal housing trust, which was the one, C P C was kind of the same sort of thing, looking for available options for housing.
Yeah.
And then it became more of the affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
It's just housing in general.
Now, Taffy, so the first item that you're looking for is vitality?
Yes.
For, for the trust.
Yeah. We have this trust that's listed in the town report with no members.
Okay.
And it, it seems to me that's where we should go. We should repopulate that group with people that are interested in pursuing affordable housing and see where we can go.
And is that, that mission, is that statement in the bylaws that says that that is what the purpose is, is for? Now, jump ahead for a second, assume that we were able to attract appropriate membership with skills and so on. With, as the Housing Authority, where would you identify our current needs? Now, one of the things that I was asked earlier today was, well, do you meet your minimums? Which I always, I always liked that question.
Right.
Because, you know, meeting your minimums is not answering the question.
Thank you.
So where, where would you see needs existing in the town currently?
Well, okay, to answer you, do we meet the minimums? We barely meet the minimum, ten percent affordable housing. And actually, Chris says he's never seen anything in writing from the state that says we have met that. But I believe with the opening of Avalon that we did. But after the next census, we will not be at ten percent because there's been more housing added, and so our ten percent number is going to go up. So, you know, we've added the Cook Estate, and we're adding the Cohasset Estates. No, Avalon's counted.
But.
But, so, you know, ten percent of five hundred homes is not the same as ten percent of six hundred homes, no.
No.
And we have not added any more affordable housing since Avalon was open.
The, it's, my question's not about the numbers.
Okay, right.
Okay? And there's a reason for clarifying it. As Chris was explaining, a rental unit, it doesn't matter how many rents for, a rental unit counts as affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know, renting, if you're renting an apartment for two thousand dollars a month and your, your household income is forty-five thousand dollars a year, well, that's not affordable.
No, that's right.
So my question is really.
What is the need?
What is, what, where does it exist? Does it exist for veterans? Does it exist, exists for low-income families? Does it exist for, you know, for disabled? That's really my question. You know, if you're.
We see it. Okay. From the Housing Authority point of view, I think we pretty much meet the needs of the low-income elderly. Our, in Cohasset, our waiting list for low-income elderly is not very long. It is much longer for low-income, to say that. But we see a need as low-income family housing.
Okay.
Which could be also veteran, retirement veteran family housing. I think it's, and you know, the, the young people who are public servants, you know, either schoolteachers or police and firemen, or veterans coming back with young families. There's just not a lot of housing stock that they can get into in this town.
Have, by the way, have you had a conversation at this point with the planning board? And the reason I'm asking is that they're entertaining at the moment re-igniting, you know, a master plan. And it would seem to me that this, this might fit from the perspective of a review of zoning bylaws. Okay. In other words, if we're, if you're looking, not you, if we, if we would be looking to encourage affordable family housing and maybe looking at that from the perspective of, you know, doing so on, you know, in spaces where you wouldn't otherwise consider development possible, if that were an encouragement, an enticement, could we look at that within the master plan?
Well, I think that it's definitely something that should be looked at. The thing I'm saying to you is, this is not going to be we, I am not going to be part of this committee. Put that right up there. But I think, I mean, I've done it. I've been there and done that.
Okay.
And I, and I said that from the beginning. But I'm willing to spearhead trying to get this committee going again. But that's why you need the committee. You get this committee formed, and then that's the perfect conversation that they should have. You know, there was a needs assessment done. We spent twenty thousand dollars for a contractor to work for the town, to do all this, to give our plan to the state of how we're going to meet the ten percent, to do a needs assessment and everything. It has not been found.
We lost, we lost the point.
We lost it. We lost, we lost that needs assessment.
Do we know who wrote it for us? I mean.
I do know her name, Judy Barrett.
I mean, they may have a copy of it somewhere.
All right.
Unless it was before the.
Yeah, but we have a member on our authority who's really looked into this a lot, and she's run a, written quite a detailed history of affordable housing in Cohasset, and she's done a really good job, just going back through the paperwork. But she couldn't find any report from this contractor that we paid back in the late, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So, Chris, I think it seemed a logical step would be to draw out, first of all, the charge of the trust.
Right.
Publish it, along with the publication of what exactly might be called for, for skills to be added to, to the trust, so that we have an understanding of who we're asking to step forward. In other words, if, you know, if there is a requirement or an encouragement for an attorney and architect and so forth, there isn't, I just.
I have not, no. Because it's a seven-member, we're a seven-member board of trustees, one selectman and six others, points about one selectman.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think there's a logic to having a variety of people with backgrounds on the, but it's not, that's not absolutely required. At least not, not from what I can tell, so.
I think the, in the town meeting, this, page four of this, it's been sent out, it's the article nineteen, it gives the charge for the, what they're looking for. It's a recognized affordable housing need, require applicants for development, project of significant impact to the town to encourage that, more of encouragement and guidelines and recommendations to try to push forth what they think to be the best for the town and for the housing. So there's the, that's in, up page four there, so fairly straightforward, but I think it's more of the, the role of the committee and the trust to push that as a means to get things done.
Could we, Russ, do you want to add some comment about your committee?
Yeah. We, our, by statute, have set aside ten percent of our income into the different categories, affordable housing being one, and it historically had not been done for quite some time.
To set aside?
Yeah. We have in there now a hundred and fifty-one thousand and change, which, you know, had we been setting aside all along, would be considerably higher. Last year, we, I tried to get the committee to double the amount we were putting into affordable housing, and it didn't pass, but it was more because they didn't want it, others feeling that they got shortchanged. Because even though we don't have enough in the affordable housing to do anything, when we bring in the unreserved funds, then we're talking a million and change.
So you.
That we can't do or.
You, you could apply unreserved.
Right. You can put the unreserved in anything. It's a minimum that you have to set aside. I wanted to double it just as a statement to say, hey, we're serious about this and build it up. But the general consensus of the board was that they're serious about it as well. And rather than doubling up on one and having everybody else say, gee, you know, what's the matter with us, that they unanimously were supportive of trying to find properties, reach out to people like Habitat, and, and see what we can come up with. It's my understanding that the properties of Avalon, the affordables, quote-unquote, go to market in, I believe, less than ten years, whereas Habitat properties or anything that we do with, with the Housing Authority would stay that for the rest of time.
The perpetuity.
Thank you. That was a word I could see, but not drag out. You know, we have, we created two units since CPC has started. Those are in the light, in the old library. And I think I may have copied your law on a memo that I sent out. To me, that's shameful.
Yeah, no, I understand that they, that they were constructed contingent upon being affordable, and then when the balance, the books didn't balance with them as affordable rents, they were simply shifted off. And it seems to me that the, that's, that's fairly head scratching.
Yeah.
Well, excuse me, that, that really isn't true.
Please clarify.
Yeah. They are, I believe, still classified as moderate income affordable. They're not low-income affordable.
I think, I think.
What we, what we, what Avalon was affordable is low-income affordable. The CPC is allowed under their statute to give money to moderate income affordable units. So that's what they did at the, and that's the difference. There's a different income level for low-income and moderate income.
Got it.
We could also, because, as you know, our money gets spent at town meeting. So if we walk out a town meeting, the next day a property comes up that we might be interested in getting, we would have to wait until next year's town meeting to do it. It's my understanding, I'm waiting for a call back from Lou Ross, that we could fund the Affordable Housing Committee with X number of dollars, so that they wouldn't be tied to the town meeting potential holdup if a property became available with, with oversight from the CPC.
Well, my understanding, though, is the trust wouldn't, the trust itself, the trustees wouldn't be the mechanism for acquisition.
They can be.
They can be.
Yeah, yeah.
I see.
In fact, that's actually, as I give this another once over, that's most of their purpose, actually. Obviously, they gotta get, they gotta get a plan together, but if they have the ability to, to acquire, to manage, to borrow, maybe it's a whole vehicle to do that.
So, that's a hard time. Okay. And the borrowing on this, borrowing on this would typically be authorized by town meeting.
This is a new mechanism, I mean, it's an old mechanism, but it's a bit rusty, so we have to take a look at it, I think, before anything happens. Yeah, they, they don't have the authority to just do things without.
They, see, they could have, I mean, my understanding, from when I was on the committee, we could have access CPC money. And the other thing was that at the time, this all was happening before the big bust. And there were developers who wanted to come in and develop apartments, say, in the village, where certain apartment would have to be affordable. If they didn't want to pay, if they didn't want to make an affordable unit, they could pay a certain amount of money to, and it would go to the trust. It's like, you know, instead of making affordable unit, I'll pay you guys off. So, but that never happened. But that was, it's written so that that could happen. That would be another source of funds.
Right. That's, you know, that's in there.
That section, page four, the section above that, you can sell, lease, exchange, transfer property, accept secure real estate, purchase, retain real estate or personal properties, really sense of authority.
It would.
Remember, the Housing Authority doesn't have the mechanism. They're not designed.
Yeah, we don't have any money.
Yeah, they're not designed, they're also not designed, they're designed to run, not to acquire.
They're managed.
Correct.
Right.
So this was apparently created, it makes sense, as a vehicle to acquire or to construct or remodel.
Yeah.
And again, it could be an ongoing partnership of the various sources.
Yeah.
Of course, it happened to come to fruition just as a recession was crashing down upon everybody and everything stopped going.
That's right, yeah.
Obviously, things have changed a little bit again, I think, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you'd put a couple of bids on houses in 'oh eight that would bought in 'oh six, you would've been fine shaping.
Yeah.
Let's start with this. We need a total of five members from the public.
Six.
I thought it was five plus with select.
It's seven total, including one select.
Six plus, six plus, six plus. So then the call would go to, to, to the public. We're looking for six members to reactivate Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust. And remember, this would be a position as a trustee, which carries with it specific duties that should not be taken lightly.
Fiduciary duties.
You, you'd act as a fiduciary, executing the terms of the trust. Terms of the trust are part of the bylaws, section sixteen, as a matter of fact, page forty-two of the bylaws, which are available on the website. So please take a look at that. But it would be, it would be especially interesting to the town to have anyone who has an interest in the topic, a background in, in any level of development, an understanding of real estate law or architecture, but most of all, I would think, simply a passion for pursuing the goals of the trust. So if we can, I'll put this out as a verbal call. I would hope that, I hope that W A T D, that the Mariner might pick this up as well and reply what we're saying here tonight. And as, as well, let's take a look through the talent bank and maybe make a few outgoing calls. All right?
I think we had a couple of people in the most recent run who might be interested in it.
Yeah, is that the, that trust listed on the committees are available for?
No, we hadn't, we hadn't been looking to fill it, so yes.
So what then we could do is put it on the application, so people get that. What about the thought of having a forum on this? Have you thought of pursuing that, maybe? See, just call for a forum, have it at the library, see who shows up, and yeah, it's an opportunity to give some background and, so, you know, there's plenty of information that we, and then just to see what would happen, and then that, doing something like that also might, the media might pick it up too and give some more publicity with what's going on. I don't, I don't see where that's, would be helpful. You put that in your letter to us, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. No, I'm reluctant to say that I would organize that.
That's fair.
Well, whoever's interested in this realm, you know.
Or someone you may know.
We're saying it now, if anybody's listening, they can organize it. It isn't a difficult thing to organize a forum like that.
Well, it comes at an opportune time. As you said earlier, the, the planning board has an interest in reexamining a master plan, especially with a variety of factors coming into confluence. One, of course, is the, the available, what would have been considered to be the available buildable land having shrunk, but now possibly having been expanded based upon sewer capacity. Number two, at this point, an undefined use for that sewer capacity. The sewer commission's going through its own study for that. Those two things alone can begin to change the, the character of the town. And one of the questions, of course, is what do you want, what do we collectively want the town to be? Do you want it to be welcoming? Or is it, is it, is the intent that it should be much more homogenous? And from my perspective, I, I would hope that we'd be an embracing and a welcoming community. If we can find a way to reactivate this trust, incorporate it, incorporate its mission along with a number of other activities which are, are happening at the same time, we may actually be re-entering this conversation in appropriate time, as opposed to where it was entered last at its, at its last point in March or two thousand and eight. So, thank you very much, Taffy, for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate, by the way, the work of the CPC to, to re-initiate the funding. And please keep it. And please, keep it up, we'll find a use for it. I mean, as a town, we'll find a use for it.
Yeah. Well, you know, the housing, one of the things we can do is recreation. We can do open space, we can do historical. We've got enough soccer fields, I think. I think we've done a lot of historical, and we've done a lot of open space. And it's time we start looking at the housing. I'm not going to exclude from any discussions any of the other categories. But I think the feeling on the board is that we need to concentrate on affordable housing. Two-unit, three-unit buildings, something like that, which would fit into a neighborhood. We're not interested in bringing in a hundred units and plopping them in somebody's backyard. But it's high time that we start doing something with affordable housing. Because it's just been, the other groups have really gotten their money's worth out of CPC, and we want to spread the ground a little bit.
Well, we, let's plan on revisiting this, at least for a progress report on applications for next week. Maybe you can incorporate it into your town manager report, Chris? And just give us an update on what we have coming forward. And we'll be able to make a few appointments before the end of October.
I'll talk to Jason tomorrow, I'll get something on the web. And I'm sure that the man will put something out in the paper. The listeners of WATD will be rushing for their computers to get the application forms.
Chair wishes to recognize a member of the media.
John Finney, WATD. Just, Mr. Chair, just please reiterate what you're calling for, so I can have it for broadcast.
We're calling for members of the community to step forward and apply for a position on the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust, which has been dormant for several years.
Seven years.
And the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust, as you heard here tonight, has specific duties charged under the language of the trust, which include developing a needs assessment, plans, the potential for acquiring, renovating, developing properties for the purpose of providing affordable housing to the town. Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Are you staying up here, Russ? The next item is the conservation restriction.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, very much. Next item on the agenda is the conservation restriction for Ingram Park, Noronton Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeff Wall, one of the directors of the Cohasset Conservation Trust. At the 2014 Annual Town Meeting, the voters voted to supply the trust with $175,000 of CPC funds to aid in the purchase of almost six acres of land owned by the Cohasset Land Foundation. Since then, we've purchased the property. The Land Foundation gave us a mortgage for the outstanding part. Our attorney has been working with town council to develop the conservation restriction. We've applied to the state to get their approval of the conservation restriction. We also had municipal approval by the Conservation Commission here in town. So we've now come to the Board of Selectmen to accept the conservation restriction.
Okay. This is the, if I remember correctly, this is essentially the formality and completion of the vote at town meeting, right?
Okay. And this is now the Ingram Park?
Jeff has, if you want to take a look.
Do you want to elaborate on any of this? Because we went down there on the opening day of it, it's a beautiful walking area. You're going to elaborate on it? You look for the public to.
The, it was originally about forty acres of land purchased by the Land Foundation.
Thank you.
And we bought twenty-two acres. And then there were four, three housing lots that were sold. There was a parcel sold to the Vendante Center. And then there was Lot Five, which you see there in orange. Was originally thought was going to be gifted to the town for soccer fields or some kind of recreational purposes. But, you know, because of the housing market and things like that, the trust, the housing trust, or the Land Foundation, offered to sell it to the Conservation Trust, which is where we are now.
On Lot Five?
Lot Five.
Okay. So we're talking about Lot Five?
Correct. We already own George Ingram Park.
And no easements or anything required there?
No.
Because we dedicated it to.
Right. The conservation restriction includes easements to the town.
On George Ingram Park?
No, just on Lot Five.
Just on Lot Five?
Right.
So would that eventually just meld into George Ingram Park?
Correct.
So it'll all become.
Yep.
Is, and I'm just curious, this has nothing to do with continuing the process, but since this borders the railroad, is there anything that we have that we need to put up as a barrier to the tracks? Or does it already exist by way of the MDT?
There's a fence there.
The MDT put it in at the time? Okay.
You saw it during the tour.
Yeah, that's on the far side.
Good for you.
It's a good question. There's not only, does it, for the tracks, for people walking, but also has an animal protection too, that fence does as well.
And in total, gentlemen, what is this, this now contiguous piece? What has it become in acreage? It was originally twenty-two.
It was twenty-two, and this is almost six.
Really?
So it's like twenty.
Okay.
Great Brewster Woods, it's about twenty-seven acres.
And we need to do what?
So you need to, I think, just to make it clean, council recommends that you just formally vote to accept the easement and then sign it. It's embedded multiple times.
Many times.
That's an understatement.
And it's been signed, you don't have, I mean, you don't have to sign it tonight. I mean, you could, it's got to be notarized as well.
Right.
But I have, there's four copies of it, so.
You have to accept it at a public meeting?
This is the same document that you're, that's already been sent to you electronically. It's the same, it's the same thing.
I'm just, I read through it last night, and I just said, I'm assuming it needs signature.
It does, it does. And in sum and substance, basically, it allows, it prohibits future development is effectively what it does. And that's enough for passive recreation.
Allows public access.
So the CPC money is effectively buying, you know, buying permanent public access to this parcel.
Can walk, have pets in this area?
Yes.
Leashed.
Unleashed.
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 Under control of the owner, which is the same as the town bylaw.
No mining. My dog will love that.
No mining.
There's no mining rights?
No mining.
You kept the mining rights?
No soil.
How about the oil rights?
State's big on state.
You can pull out a portion of that.
No mining, excavating, dredging, or removing from the premises of soil loam. So you're, basically, you can't show them.
Well, there's also no ocularisable stuff, so I can't do any digging there. That did give me some pause.
There's an old foundation there.
I know. I have my eyes on it.
Yeah, removal of non-native or invasive species, the interplanting of native species, or the control of native species in a manner that minimizes damage to surrounding non-targeted species. I've lost me on species. Preserves water quality, etc. Yeah, this is a, as for the folks who are listening, the easement essentially protects this land to be used for passive recreational use, as I understand it, by the public, in perpetuity.
Yes.
In perpetuity.
Which essentially means, you know, takes nothing but pictures, leaves nothing but footprints.
Right.
All right. Do you have the document? Let's move around. I think we will have to reserve it for two other selectmen's signatures.
You don't need all five. Okay, nice, you only need three.
I don't think Karen.
Well, I think, I think.
She couldn't, she couldn't, Karen, she recused herself anyway, so.
I think as an action of force, the quorum will do.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to accept the conservation restriction. Easement on six acres on Noronton Road, Cohasset, S.C., that's shown in Lot Five, on Plan B, according to Plan Book Five, Seven, Two, that's Plan Number Sixty-Three.
A second there. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Give your motion.
Diane, it's a second. Now, that's my pro, Diane can sign after the fact.
Say, I want to say all four?
Well, you don't have to do them all in a second if you have any. But I promised, we'll go up to Jeff's. I have to get it normalized anyway, so.
I have no further questions, gentlemen. The vote is official, the signatures are forthcoming. I believe this is what would be considered being first.
For now, we just have to release the money, which I'm assuming you're okay with at this point. And then we're done.
Honestly, yeah, I trust these guys.
All right, so we're good. So just let's get that going, so I know you want, I know you need to get that.
Yes, we do.
So, so we're waiting. So just.
It's not about the money, it's about the money.
Can you just send me, just for the purposes, you just send me an email saying, okay, as of last night, we're all good.
Yeah.
Send it to me and Mary. And just, you can just send us whatever we need to process the check. Well, calls, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That we want to do too, on the portion of the CPC money, and Jeff and I had talked about it briefly. We want to have the signs that show that there was CPC and taxpayer contribution. And that we're starting to stick that all over the place.
Okay, great. Thank you once again for your work on getting this.
They were great to work with, too, by the way. This is the second project we've done with them since I've been on the board. Second, maybe third, I don't remember. But, you know, it was a joy to work with them.
It's been an experience for me, too.
On to the next project. Yeah.
All right, thanks again, guys. It is now seven forty. Next item on the agenda is the selectmen update. And we'll touch on each individual's comments, but then, for some reason, we have the review of the town manager's goals under selectmen comment. Selectmen, I guess we're going to comment on it. Say that again?
I guess we'll comment on it.
Well, it is on the agenda appropriately, so let's. So let's tackle this one by one.
Yeah, I was going to talk about the Friday, but the, she, Cindy did so already, so I'm all set.
Okay.
My apologies for being late. I caught three seconds of it on TV and realized something was very much missing. So as the woman representative tonight, I'm happy to be here. And nothing else. But I apologize for being late.
Want to mention about the 9/11 memorial services. I have mixed emotions about it. That's my son's birthday, so it was a wonderful day that I remember when it happened a few years later when he was, I think, five or six. Coming from a big family, I had a brother-in-law who was an Air Force officer down in the Pentagon. I had a sister who knew some of the pilots, and it's, it still really is a very tragic and very emotional one for me, because I know it's both one of the finest days in my life that I can remember, and one of the saddest from the town, my family, one of them.
Thank you. I simply want to acknowledge that we are at that point in the year when parents rejoice, school started again. The beaches are a little bit quieter. And once again, the town is back to its full level of activity. And it's always enjoyable to see that turn of the seasons. So with that, I wish the, I wish the schools a healthy new scholastic year, the various sports teams a, you know, a successful season, in whatever season they're in. And for the Directed Arts Program, music, drama, et cetera, they put on great shows. Have nothing more for selectmen comments, so let's move along to the review of the specific objectives that we've put forward for the town manager by subcommittee. Paul Schubert and Diane Kennedy both worked with Lisa, our HR director, to formulate these.
I'm going to say Lisa Yu, because I'm not going to ruin her name.
Julia Loro.
All right.
Want me to queue it up?
Sure.
Basically.
Actually, let me, a quick thing. So the goals are designed, I think, from three points of view. One is general overview. The next one would be more specific. And then overlying those are short-term and long-term. So some of the goals you'll see have a one-year plan, some have a five-year longer plan, although they are goals for fiscal year sixteen. There will be a little bit of overlap of these, so not to be particularly loud. It has to do with computers, while it's not going to suddenly shut down at the end of the year. So some of them will overlap. It's an overview of the five selectmen's views, and to try to make the goals reasonable, doable, and not onerous, but strategic and tactically good enough to get done in a reasonable fashion in a year.
The only thing I wanted to sort of say was, none of this, we didn't make any of this up. These are all goals that were either identified in the FY16 goals that we felt needed to carry forward, or were brought up in our last conversation. If there is any omissions, and we can talk about that, it was, it's unintentional. So we took everybody's comments from the last meeting. A few selectmen provided us with written objectives, and we worked with Lisa to integrate all of them and not leave anything out, but put them into actionable, achievable goals. So right now, there are four, four, right? Four overarching goals. One is develop communication strategy to manage town operations. The other is, next one is enhance government services delivery, which addresses both action with respect to building an infrastructure as well as human resources. And that is more than just the employees, but it also addresses some of the performance management programs that we're working on, as well as contracted services. The next goal is protect and enhance financial stability of Cohasset. That was there last year, I would imagine it's probably going to be there in some form forever. And then lastly, to continue to advance current ongoing town priorities. So these are actions that we felt were conversations that are kind of ongoing currently, that we wanted to make sure were reflected in the goals for this fiscal year. The only thing that is missing that we can discuss is anything that Chris sees or has identified that isn't already here. So, you know, it's up to you how you want to go through this or what his input.
Well, I do want to, well, I don't want to leave. But I do want to ask that we just tweak at least the language in, you know, the first tab of Human Resources section there.
Sure.
Replace the word bidding with procuring. I don't want to be too technical. I would say, and a plan for procuring contracted services.
Yeah, we know, we know.
Yeah, we don't bid out those. And the other, I would, the second line there, I could say billing. I assume, since we've been discussing it, really, it's ambulance billing, right?
Yeah, if you want to get specific, that would be great. We would love that.
Yeah, we're not looking for anything else at the moment.
Yep.
Where, I'm sorry, where?
So it's the first bullet under Human Resources, which currently reads, evaluate and develop priorities and a plan for bidding, but we're going to change that to procuring contracted services, colon, conservation agent, engineering, legal, ambulance billing, and bond counsel.
There'll be others, we'll just update those.
Right. And this action step is asking for an evaluation and prioritizing and a plan. Doesn't necessarily mean everything has to be Xed off, but certainly I think the board would be looking for some of these to be Xed off.
Well, yeah, absolutely. But in the scheme of things, we would like to know from your perspective that A is more important than B, and therefore should get the time and energy. And if I can, and completion of A costs some progress on B, we have a good understanding as to why, then we can move ahead with that.
Now, I would also say that maybe we should make a, do a formal quarterly update or something, or something like that, where we pick at least one meeting or every other month or something, we spend at least fifteen minutes going over these things. And maybe they tweak, or, you know. And maybe they tweak, or, you know, does that make some article sense?
Yes, it absolutely makes sense to put this against a...
Review of the Artic.
We can, we gain an understanding of what's being accomplished, and likewise, you get to demonstrate the progress on it.
One of the things that we discussed with Lisa was setting some benchmarks, which we didn't get into the specifics of, because we wanted to get everybody's input on, as well as Chris's. But under the first bullet, which is, under the first goal, which is develop communication strategy to manage town operations, we've got everything but the kitchen sink in there, I think. And the last one is communications with the board. And one of the things we requested in here is include and packet a summary of issues likely to be presented during the Town Manager Update. And that was sort of just a suggestion as something that, with some communication, whether it's a quarterly report, or it's a, by meeting, at least we have some kind of virtual paperwork, I guess, so that we can review and evaluate before we get in during the Town Manager Update. And it also acknowledges the monthly financial executive summaries, which have been really helpful.
I started, I, could I start again with these kind of issue updates I've been sent to you? I incorporate something like that.
And we can incorporate some of the goals, you know, going with what we have.
Yeah, it's actually, I can do, I can incorporate a report on goals into those. I think it's probably a good idea. Make it formal, so I already have kind of a template.
It gives us a little bit of idea of things that are going on that we may not necessarily be directly involved with, that we'll get information ahead of time, do a little research, a little bit, a couple of phone calls, and find out, you know, a little background, so we're versed on it.
With so many things moving in any given day, and I started my work with Kevin, and that's been like, shh, I don't think. And yet, the other day, you know, having a formal template to report back is actually helpful, well, it's all of us actually, so.
So, we'll put quarterly reports into this, then?
Every other, I was gonna say, every other month, maybe, bi-monthly is, quarterly's fine.
It's fine, quarterly, every other month's fine with me.
Yeah, every other, I figured every other month.
But let's put it in the documents, so it's not...
So, we'll make it, I'll try to incorporate updates into regular reports, too, anyway. But we should have a formal set aside, do we talk in a public room?
Because there's a number of things here that ask for reporting formally, so that when those bi-monthly times come, we can have this before us, say, it'll remind us to ask you and have a dialogue about it, remind you to report on it.
So, I'm looking, Tracy and I have been actually starting to set up a, I think, we just call it Tickle System or something, I don't, I guess it was named after somebody once upon a time. I don't really like the name, but...
Joe Tickler.
Yeah. But just a, we're looking at the board, you know, the Selectmen's base for the rest of the year, and I'm trying to slot in issues, so we can start doing that. I'm trying to take things in chunks at a time now. With their standard schedule, it's a little easier, so we can plan this things out. And I have a variety of things in motion, none of which I'm prepared to talk about. But they're in motion, so I'm hoping to have, in the next couple of meetings, to be able to give you some feedback as to where we are, some things. We've had some really, some really good conversations. It's now a matter of moving to actual agreements with some organizations to move some progress.
I have one item on... Protect and Enhance Financial Stability Cohasset. Please do not apply for a bond rating before you renew the usual bond.
Yes. Just call it a platform rating.
You don't need it for yet.
No. Actually, I mean, if you're not, they're gonna, the ratings agency, in this case S&amp;P, would, will give us the designation that we earn. We can lobby them, but if we were specifically to go forward and ask for a AAA rating and then not receive it, that's a published message, and it's not one that you necessarily want to publish.
So, how would you recommend changing that language? One of the things that we talked about was, you know, we wanted to acknowledge that aspiration within the financial picture.
Pursue. Continue to pursue a bond rating.
So, pursue for bond rating?
You know, with a goal of a AAA designation. And just, that's it, because the trigger on the next rating, unless S&amp;P comes forward and recognizes progress being made and upgrades our rating on its own.
Right.
Okay.
So, before you go for a bond, that's when you get a push for that?
The next likely...
So, you would say pursue bond rating with a goal of a AAA designation?
Right, which is still aspirational. And the next likely trigger for this is going to be, it would be ninety-one Sawyer, in all likelihood, so.
We might have some sewer bonding to do as well, some minor stuff, but we're looking at that.
Okay.
But right, that's the, you can actually go for an independent review, but you gotta pay for them. Otherwise, it's incorporated into that review, so you might pay twice.
And not succeeding at that independent review.
Right, that's not...
It's like not passing the bar, so.
Anything else?
No, I think the final piece, continue to advance current ongoing town priorities, I'd be interested to hear, Chris, what in that item or action steps you would add that we haven't identified.
I'm sorry, do you mind if I just read what we have for viewers at home?
Oh, yes, please.
In the audience? So, right now, continue to advance current ongoing town priorities, including bring ninety-one Sawyer Street to resolution, bring space leased to Our World Museum to resolution, engage relevant individuals, committees, and advance discussions on open space plan, alternative energy initiatives, economic development, co-hasset housing trust, affordable housing, and the three A studies. So, we just thought, those are things that have popped in and out of agendas over the last year and a half, and we thought that those are all things that we still need to move the ball forward.
I'd even add the master plan to that.
Okay.
Let's see if I have it somewhere else.
We do have it somewhere else, but...
It's under Enhance Government Services, Space and Human Resources.
Figuring, I would think...
Top of the second page.
That's a tough...
And that actually came up a couple of places, and so where do you place...
Yeah, I mean, by the way, it's, it's helping to advance the conversation. I don't have any power to make that happen.
Right, that's right. It comes out of the...
Okay.
These items are, these are examples of items that are within your wheelhouse. Okay. Continue to advance the conversation in the master plan, yes, but are there other areas in this that you're seeing and we're not?
I think I'd like to see how some things shake out over the next couple of weeks, and I might be able to add a couple. Because I think this is a, I think this lends itself most to updating over the course of time. I mean, I mean, there's, you know, we have, dredge is in motion, so it's a matter of, you know, fulfilling that and getting that all tied up in a bow, and there's like a number of other things that are kind of like that, that I, maybe some of them might belong in here, something, but let me, let me chew on a little bit and add some, bounce some back on.
Okay. On page one there, under Enhance Government Services section, is a line here for establish a plan for professional development strategy. I think that could be specified a little more. I assume that may mean beyond you, you're talking the staff and other professionals and so forth?
Well, I didn't write this up.
Yeah, so a couple of things come up with that. One was professional development from the point of view of the administration, then how far do you go down? Do you do every single individual employee, or do you at the discretion of the department heads, just say that delegates, and you need to set up some sort of professional development of those that are necessary for, a need for? So, typically would be the administrators and the ones who are in the level of...
Right. So, I just like to see that specifies that that's for the entire staff.
Yes.
You might throw in, in conjunction with Human Resources Executive as well.
Lisa helped us write that, because we were talking about, you know, we want to make sure our employees have professional development employees, and she was really pushing us, every single one of them?
Yeah.
Because these are his goals, so then we're like, alright, let's just let him establish the plan. But what we could do for town, about like working with Human Resources, establish a plan for professional development strategy for town employees.
An appropriate plan, something to give them some latitude. The idea is professional development for town employees, is what I'm getting at.
Yes, I thought definitely that's correct.
I'm sure she always took that.
Well, this is kind of an ongoing conversation we have.
Yeah. I think last year or another time, we'd had one of the goals, and I don't wanna add a new goal, maybe it could be in the last, or maybe not at all. I noticed that you did a good job of pretty much integrating a lot of what our goals were into this, because I matched it up there. Do we wanna specify that at the end there to say that, you know, not as a new category, but under the list of things, Sawyer, so forth, but, you know, continue to support, you know, the Board of Selectmen in achieving their 2016 goals, and copy attached, and then there's one unified package there. You know, we're all completely on the same page, you know?
Yeah, I think that was an oversight.
That actually came up.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Some of the goals are overlapping, and that everyone wants to be successful in the town.
Yeah, I just, if we just attached it, then it would be, we're a unity.
Because it is one, one in the same, yeah, got it.
All right, so I ask the Subcommittee at this point, how would you propose proceeding with what we have here? We have comments, some small changes. But do you want, do you wish to just revise this, bring it back for next meeting and vote it?
If the board were comfortable with, you know, voting this now, with, as it will be amended, I would prefer to just get it off the agenda.
The board may be comfortable, would the recipient be comfortable? If the board moved ahead as amended?
I'm fine.
As amended?
So, if you don't mind if I just, I just wanna review the amend, the things that we decided we were gonna amend. So, under the, the Human Resources thing, that first bullet is, we're just gonna change the word bidding to procuring, and we're gonna add ambulance to the billing. We're gonna change the, under the financial, let me back up, I'm sorry. So, in the, under the first, develop communication strategy, we're just gonna acknowledge that we will have a bi-monthly status report within the Town Manager Report with updates on the status of these goals and objectives. We will change the language under financial, hold on one sec. That says pursue bond rating with a goal of AAA designation. Is that right?
Right.
And then, we will add a line at the, under, continue to advance current ongoing town priorities, that it just acknowledges that the work in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen in achieving their stated goals for the year.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And no, just, and you were gonna reemphasize that town, the professional development strategy is for town employees.
For town employees, got it, thank you, yep.
So, one, two, three, four, five.
Right, did I caption that one down?
Yes, yeah, that's...
Okay.
So, you're okay with that?
Hmm? So... And you were gonna attach a copy of this, you said that?
Yes, yep.
So, I make a motion, I mean, accept the Town Manager Goals, fiscal year sixteen as amended?
I happily second it.
With the addendum from the Board of Selectmen calls.
Including the addendum, as well as these other things, you know?
I did second it.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes forty zero.
Once this is completed, is it appropriate to put this up on the website, so the world can see?
Yes.
Here's what our Town Manager's doing, the also can see what our goals are, too, somewhere there, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that'd be nice, you know?
I mean, I can get, I'll make the changes as early as tomorrow, I mean, if everybody's comfortable with it, it's a valid document.
All right. It is now eight oh five, we're a little bit behind schedule, but next item on the agenda is Town Manager Report.
I'll make it quick to get us back on time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna talk some more later. As part of an ongoing effort to fulfill these goals, Lisa Loro officially joined the staff as the Director of Human Resources and Special Assistant Supervisor on Monday, so this passed Monday, actually. She's on a sixty percent schedule, so she's here three full days a week. And is available outside those hours as well, and she'll be physically on site. She'll be here a couple of days, and then she'll be at the library. So, it's outside, people can go on Friday, so she's free, people can come and go and see her, and she's, it's a quiet place, you can meet with folks.
Does she have appropriate office space?
If she's comfortable right now, yes. She has the ability to meet privately with folks in the space we created down the hall, and she camps out usually here, and she's available, and she's actually usually in meetings a big chunk of the time, anyway. So, I think this gives us a chance to collaborate at least a little bit, and we are looking at space such as it's available. So, that's a positive.
Good.
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, I did attend a conference, part of last week, in New England Government Finance Officers, and I actually had a chance to have lunch with Steve in the City last week as part of that. It's a regional, it's all six New England states get together, and it's a, mine has a Government Finance Officer Conference. So, among the things I discussed, another goal and objective was I met with a person that happens to do our bond rating for S&amp;P. So, they did a program on S&amp;P's bond rating process, so I sat through it. It doubled down on some of the things I already knew, but it was, it always adds more depth, and I got to talk to them afterwards, let them introduce myself, and underscore the town, and talk a little bit about some of the aspects that I thought were particularly important, I wanted more clarification, and so that was a good opportunity. I find these conferences, and again, I was in and out, and it was in Boston, so I didn't get those, no travel expense. So, I was there, I was either here or there, part of a couple of different days, so I either start here, go there, go there, and go there. It was, you know, you meet people, you meet other communities, you really hear what's going on. It was definitely worth it from that perspective. And as I also happened to win one day a set of Government Finance Officer budget books.
Wow.
So, yes, yes, it's, so I have a little packet of them, they're in Mary's office at the moment. So, it was a nice little addition to our budget library. So, if anyone was really bored one day, I could give them capital budget planning, accounting for capital projects and things like that, so we have all that.
Actually, that would be useful.
So, we have, we have all that. No, it's all, they were all good little pamphlets and things, they were all hard copied, too, so. But it was, actually, I had a good conversation with a couple of other finance directors from the community, and talking about OPEC and a few other topics. It was definitely good, it was a good opportunity to meet and talk, so that's my quick update.
Thank you. All right. Eight o'clock, Selectmen Liaisons. In your packet, upload it today, I'm sorry I was late, is the Selectment Liaisons for fiscal year sixteen. Just a point, a point of order. Last year, the Chairman initiated a policy which attempted to focus the Chairman and Vice Chairman in their liaison capacities on those committees which are appointed by way of the Troyco. And the concept being that having a greater familiarity with those, with those committees would be useful when the appointments came forward. I tried to continue that this year to the extent possible, and as well, you'll also notice that we have, or I have, removed all elected boards from this, all right? The concept here is very simple. We as citizens have the availability to attend any meeting we wish, but being a liaison from the Board of Selectmen carries with it a focus and attention upon the activities of the committee, and the fact of the matter is that other, other boards, other positions which are elected are frankly charged with carrying out their specific duties and might not necessarily feel so welcoming to a, maybe unintended, but nonetheless, vision oversight from the Selectmen. Attend as you, as you wish, attend as a citizen, and please, obviously, remain active. But it is just a mark of good governance to allow an elected body to undertake its task and do so with, you know, without any intervention, implied or otherwise. With that, however... With that however, folks have at it, charge forward.
The only thing is, like, capital budget and advisory look like they have three members, was that intentional?
Yes, yes, it is, because, and I'll be absolutely candid about this, my potential for attending a lot of meetings is really limited, okay? And when it comes, when it comes to capital budget or advisory, which are the two most active financial committees, I do believe that if you have attendance at those, at those meetings, first of all, it's going to be a great learning experience. And frankly, as the, as the Board continues to grow and evolve over time, having more people engaged and assigned, and that just builds the depth of the Board, okay?
Good, okay.
I got it easy.
I think because I have the oldest house of the five sitting members, I should be on the historical commission than I am, so thanks.
Perfect.
Hey, perfect.
So we can tour your house, make a whole meeting's name.
Again, I have to dress in garden. Again, I say this to each of you, if you're, if you're not assigned a liaison, it doesn't mean stay away. It simply means that, you know, that's, those, those are the points of communication that we intend to follow.
Just remember, by the way, if you're, if three of you are in a meeting, just don't sit together and chat, it's probably not a good idea.
Where it really happens.
No, I know, I'm just, you know.
Review again for the public order, it is that the liaison is essentially a communication conduit, am I right?
That's exactly.
So it's clear to everybody.
The goal, the goal is to, is to develop and facilitate communication between the committees, to help the committees in the extent possible, effectively perform their duties with the, you know, the assistance as necessary from the Board of Selectmen, but as well, simply by developing that communication, make their, their job that much more effective, so.
Just a couple of things, I think it makes sense to take out of the liaison package the elected boards. I think that helps clarify the little responsibility we have as liaisons. The other thing this brings up in my mind, which, which we talked about a little bit when we discussed the professional development piece of Chris's goals and objectives, and that is, one of the things we did talk about was kind of the professional development of those that are sitting on our committees and boards, which we, I think that's one of the reasons we took out the word employees from that, but we also recognize that that's the responsibility, at least, well, it is the responsibility certainly for the, to the committees that we appoint to help them out in terms of providing opportunities for them to get some kind of professional development and/or training and/or whatever that we need, but I think we do need Chris to help us with that, especially for other elected boards. So I would, I hope we can at some point discuss having another session like we did last year, maybe rejiggering it a little bit. We had Town Council come in and talk a lot about open meeting law, but there's still a lot of, I think.
And they survived.
Everybody survived, and we had great attendance, and, you know, I definitely, I would like to get in the habit of making sure that's an annual thing, and doing what we can to provide these people that are really in the trenches and making some really tough decisions, we had a real tough one last week, and, you know, every person that sits at that table has a very big responsibility, but they also, you know, they're also bringing everything they can to that, and I think we need to do whatever we can to support them and make them understand what they're, that they're supported and that, you know.
I did reach out to Council to find some dates, I recommend that on Monday, I think that's usually the better night.
Great.
Later in September or early October.
I want to emphasize, I want to support the idea though, if we do this again, let's not have this a complete dry legal review. This should be something, I would like to see something more where people can talk about maybe their roles and things they need and what they think is important, without violating, I think that, I don't, and then we can pass out the open meeting law or whatever it is, but.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have them, I agree, I think having to speak for two hours is probably scaring people away.
Well, it's beyond scary, it's sleepy.
I have to say that if you simply pulled the current or past boards of Selectmen, you'd find a fairly extensive history of committee work. And if that's all you had to draw from, you'd have, you know, five minutes from each.
As a panel.
Yeah.
Great idea, great idea.
But not limiting it, not, please don't allow it to limit that, if you think about just going out and saying, well, who else do you know has had, has put in years? And you go to the Library Trustee, you go to, you get the idea that pretty quickly, you're going to build quite a databank of people who could sit on a panel and discuss.
Oh yeah, and they should be sharing a lot of their experiences, so that's, mentoring, building into mentoring.
An elected board, an appointed regulatory board, appointed advisory board, that might actually, yeah.
And I think, I think it would, I completely agree with Kevin, if, you know, after about like ten minutes, I was like, okay.
Well, there is a degree that we have to talk about.
But I was just going to say, I do think it would be helpful to have Council, Town Council there as part of the panel, because I think a lot of people who are on committees often aren't as clear as maybe even those who have admirably served very well for long periods of time, may not always have it exact.
Well, one example, there may be, maybe they talk for ten minutes, and the panel talks about the realities of how that works.
Exactly, absolutely.
And they talk about the reality of how that works, that might not be.
I think we could really create that nicely.
That would be a fun, good evening, I think.
So who's on the meeting, so you're on the planning, you're both on the planning committee for this, is that?
Yes, happily.
Isaiah, I tell you what, let's formalize that, would you, would you Kevin, would you Diane, be willing to serve on another Subcommittee? Still another Subcommittee?
No, I'm done with my others.
To organize a, what would you call it, a resource night?
It's a training, it's a really, it's a committee, committee resource.
It's the annual co-asset committee meeting.
I'll let you guys comment.
Yeah, we'll come up with a name, we'll do the branding, we'll get a logo going.
We'll get a Facebook page on this one going.
Twitter feed, that'd be great.
Yeah, and just one other piece I just want to drop, one thing that happens, and this is kind of the professional development piece too, is MMA comes up every year, the conference, in, at the end of January, and usually the Selectmen are very well represented and a few town departments, but I think that, that particular weekend, I would like to see more staff go to that, to be honest with you, because, you know, we walk around with our bags, you know, collecting stress squeeze balls and chocolates, but the truth of the matter is, it's people, I'm just painting a picture, I don't literally, but I, I think there's probably a lot of people on staff that, you know, I would charge you with, like, kind of identifying now that could value from learning about the various kinds of parking meters that are out there, or streetlights or whatever, more so than us.
I think trade show, and I also think, one of the things that, I, I used to sign up for these anyway, but it turns out if you attend my sponsored programs, you get bonus points to reduction of your insurance premium.
Keep going.
So I want to make sure that we hit as many of those sessions as possible, right? I went to them anyway, because they were interesting, but, you know, it turns out, you're getting bonus points, why the heck not buy as much as you can? So we will talk more about that. Now, one of the challenges is that many of our appointed officials have other programs, they go, we have Treasure Collector, Director of Finance, but this is in Boston, it's not hard to get to. So I'll, we'll make more of an effort, I think, to get a few more bodies.
Good. Okay, I noticed, I attended the school committee meeting the other night as a citizen, and I noticed that they did their appointment of meetings as we did, they have a legislative liaison position. Seems like they seem to feel as though they get a lot out of it, and I was wondering, do we want to consider having it? Someone who sort of keeps in touch and reports to us what's going on?
Kevin, we can, can we bring that back around next meeting? Because that's a fairly specific area of discussion, and I don't want to take that fly by night, okay? I mean, that, that carries with it a lot, an awful lot more meat than, you know, going to just the, the historical commission or something like that.
All right, yeah.
So, I think it, I think it may, it makes a good deal of sense, let's talk about, let's plan on bringing this up.
Can we put that on the agenda next time?
For the next meeting, we'll figure out a definition of what that liaison would be.
If we could, if we could, could even have someone from the school committee be here, because, I mean, they have one going, so.
We have, we have an expert school committee.
And we also have, I'm also thinking, I mean, Paul has, Paul's been doing that quite successfully for a while.
It's extremely helpful for the things that are out there that you don't know about, particularly grants, like, the classic one was the, the School of Resource Officer. There was, there were monies available that suddenly got vetoed, and when we found out, you found out, if it's got vetoed, you speak to your rep and your state senate person and the governor, and you say, you know what, we really need, these monies are available, they were vetoed, can we get it back in as an override? Those are helpful, in addition to the budgetary process, where you get an idea of what the Chapter Seventy monies are going to be, what the ideas of what the monies for the town, of general unrestricted grant money, unrestricted aid to cities and towns, and the Chapter Ninety monies for the roadway, so you get a lot of background from the, I think it's very helpful. It doesn't necessarily mean you lobby for anything in particular, but informational is extremely helpful. From the school point of view, it was, you knew, you're trying to get money for Chapter Seventy, you're trying to get money for a grant, and you can push that individually, but this would be much more of an informational, what's out there, and I think it's helpful.
Okay, so we'll bring that back up on the twenty seventh.
One other quick thing, the liaisons.
You're killing me, you know that.
The liaison, they're, they're not a voting member for any committee that they may be in.
There is, there is a notation at the top.
There's no ex officio members in there, so just, it's more advisory.
Liaison is, on, you might notice on the, on the very top paragraph, Selectmen, as noted, Selectmen are not members of the committees, too much they are liaisons, you have, Selectmen have zero authority on these committees, and they're not, just because you're not on them.
There's only one committee where there's a Selectman.
CPC.
CPC.
CPC, that's right, but that's, my point however, is that.
Right, that's a liaison, once you're a member.
Right, all right. We're completed with this for now, all right, let's move along, next item on the agenda is opening the special Town Meeting warrant.
So we, I, I, when I went back and, I've circulated you a deadline, a list, the last one, which is really fundamentally unchanged. We just have to talk about a couple of things now, one, I said double check, we moved the meeting up two weeks, so things are tighter this year. At the same token, there's not as much, I don't think, for us to talk about this all, as it happened in some other years. I will talk a little bit about that now. So you're opening the warrant, I'm going to give you a quick briefing of where we are, and then you should open it. Under the bylaws, you open the warrant, and there's a seven day window within which citizen petitions can be, it's a, forty-five is the annual special seven days. And so there's a seven day window for a citizen's petition to be placed on the warrant, and then we have a window for review. So since the warrant has to be put to bed by early October, we really will have a couple of weeks. Since you're not meeting again, the appropriate time to open it, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, is tonight. So it'll be open for a week, and then it'll close in a week, but both externally and primarily internally, we could still do something and we could do something that came up. And then I'm going to recommend that you consider doing another meeting off cycle, only because we're coming into a special meeting, either on the twenty-ninth of September or the sixth of October, the sixth of October gives you a little bit more time to be able to just finalize a warrant, because if you get to the thirteenth, we're really post, we're really pushing. That'll be your first, I'm sorry, your first scheduled meeting in October, it's going to be the thirteenth. And we have to get the, the warrant has to be posted by the nineteenth, it has to go out two weeks in advance, so we won't have very much time. If we waited that long, it'd be very, very tight, and if there was any problem at all, we wouldn't be able to get a three week hold, and that would be bad.
So do you do the sixth?
Yeah, I would say, I would say the sixth would probably be the best, and I mean, not much to do that. And you don't have to do it on a Tuesday by the way, you do it any night, but you should do it sometime in that week. I know we have the seven, this warrant goes to print with a little bit of flexibility.
So what would we be doing, we would be reviewing the warrant article?
We'd be finalizing the warrant that night and say, okay, we're sealing it, it's done, you know.
This is quick, huh?
But I could also talk about what's on, potentially on it, do you want to talk about that too?
The what?
What's potentially on it, okay? So, I'll just take one of these, actually, you know, number one. So there are routine, at the moment, there's placeholder routine ones, amendments to the budget, which are moving money around, unpaid bills, I'm not sure that there are any, but it's just a big hole open in case there's something out there. Last year we made some amendments to the, it's a capital proven project off cycle, I'm not sure that there's anything in place at this point. Moving money to stabilization funds from free cash, that would be on the warrant. One-time cost items, and again, the full.
I've got one page here.
No, no, I know, I don't know, I didn't distribute this.
This is a secret?
No, 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 I, I, I went to print it, and it printed all of the, I used last year's as a model, and it printed all the redactions, so I didn't want to, I will, I will post something for all of you with a cleaner version of this, there's only, there's only nine items. One-time cost, I have been, I've been talking to you for a while about the closure of the, or the early termination of our world, so that would be something, and I asked for funding for, we've also been meeting with Clark Brewer to talk about, Chairman of Planning Board to talk about master plan, so we've had a preliminary conversation about that, so he's going to get back to me shortly, in fact, I need to follow up with him, we have to see what we are. So there may be some, a request for some funding to start that process up, and there might be some, you know, some renovations to our world space, but nothing crazy. Water has discussed moving money around the water department to allow some, some interim capital work. Sewer has also asked about the same, they need to do some work on grinder pumps, so they've asked for some hold on that. And the last one is what I just gave you, so the clerk has, the clerk has historically, the, the Board appoints, the Selectmen appoint election officers, usually under the recommendation of the clerk, which comes through the recommendations of the political boards. There's always been a circumstance where on Election Day, somebody gets sick, can't show up, the clerk needs to appoint somebody. The clerk has historically appointed people, well, technically, the town has to adopt the law to allow the clerk to do that on Election Day, otherwise the Selectmen have to do that. Since we're not calling special meetings on Election Day, typically have you appoint, it doesn't happen all the time, but if it does, the clerk wants that flexibility, and I've circulated you what the state, what the state law is, the town has to formally accept Section Sixteen A of Chapter Fifty-four, which allows the clerk to appoint on Election Day in an emergency. And I think it's a reasonable, reasonable thing, and that's all it is, it doesn't, in fact, it's been going on apparently historically in many communities for a long time, but we really should have this adapt, adopted, so the town needs to.
Okay, so essentially, from what you've outlined, it's a anticipation at this point, it's a relatively concentrated brief meeting?
Yes, I'm not aware, no one's raised any other issues. There are some, you know, we talked about some bylaw cleanup, but it's probably better to wait until the spring for that, particularly since we're about to start a bylaw recodification process anyway, so there's no point in leaving that. If, we know of one or two that, you know, where there's a double number and things like that, we'll just wait till the spring and let the bylaw codification, recodification bring that up. There's, you know, we don't typically do much capital off cycle, like this, so there's, you know, except that in an emergency or something. And there's no real bylaw, major bylaw changes that I'm aware of, there's been no zoning issues, so nothing's been raised at least. And since we have a such limited window anyway, it's best just to focus on things that have to get done.
Now, was there any discussions as far as transferring money from free cash to OPEB?
Yeah, well, that's the stabilization fund fund, we, at the very least, put in the savings of healthcare into OPEB as we've committed, which is roughly a quarter million dollars, might go higher than that, but that's the floor. And then put money back into stabilization based on what we took out to plug the snow at least, if not more.
So is this, are you going to propose a warrant article for the million, we have a million dollars in free cash.
Yeah, it wouldn't use all of it, I also recommend, as we did last year, that we keep a piece of it as free cash.
Right.
That allows, I mean, it can't be used anyway, but it's, I think everyone's bonded to the concept of install all capital, not everyone.
Are you going to propose, you're going to propose a warrant article that distributes that, and when will, when will we see that?
Well, next, we'll see it next meeting.
The twenty-second, okay.
All right, but I'm also, I'm telling you right, it's roughly, about half of them, roughly a million dollars that's there, would go into stabilization of some kind or another at least.
And then we're with the other half billion, or do you want us to wait till next time?
Well, I probably, I'd say if I broke it into four pieces, well, half of it would go onto stabilization right now, half a million of it, two fifty, two fifty. It's a OPEB and stabilization, roughly about half.
So there's five hundred, right?
Yeah, five hundred, there might be a hundred and fifty in my brain at the moment in one-time expense, and then the rest is, might stay as free cash, that's, that's what I'm. Um, and then the rest is, might stay as free cash, that's, that's what I'm.
We wouldn't do anything to, to put into, um, capital monies, do we need any monies there?
In the short term, I don't think we do, um, and there's a big chunk of money planned to go into there, and we could, I mean, um, we could.
I wouldn't leave a lot in free cash, why?
No, no, we, about a quarter million, about, about, about quarter million dollars.
Because as soon as you allocate, you can support the tax base question, also have access to it, so.
Well, I, you'd have to, I allocate for spending, and I don't think anyone's gonna spend it, so unless we have to. But it becomes available.
But in other words, I would say use this limited cushion as possible.
Well, I, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars is a pretty limited amount of money, and if, for example, bad winter, that could automatically cover snow. I mean, I know we have the reserve fund, you know, I'm, I'm a belt and suspenders guy on this stuff, if I can't make, so.
Well, let's, let's.
Probably talk more about that next week.
Let's discuss that proposal a little bit more broadly.
But I'm just giving you, that's a highlight.
The, in the details of what goes to town meeting, or remember, they're the board's details.
Right.
Okay. There's recommendations of the town manager, but the board is the one who presents this, or sends this forward. Um, I propose that we, uh, reserve the sixth of October if it's necessary, uh, for an additional meeting date.
That's fine.
Okay.
Good.
My, I'm, my hope is that this is, uh, a focused enough warrant that we don't need it. But nonetheless, we'll reserve that date.
Seven o'clock meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, it may be, I mean, I'm not saying, I just, just in case, sorry.
Let's just.
Cause your last scheduled meeting was the twenty-second, so, um, the way we're working on cycles, uh, it's tonight and again on the twenty-second. So again, I, I also don't know what, the other thing is, I don't know what's gonna, I don't know if anything come in, so. So you, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you make a form of vote, opening the warrant tonight, or similar to the town.
Folks?
Um, I just wanna make a, a comment on that. I just wanna make sure that we get the information to the Mariner. Since there is only a seven day window for citizen petitions, make sure that it's out there. Cause that means they're gonna be due at close of business next Wednesday.
Uh, no, we open tonight, it's next two, it'll be.
It would be next Tuesday, cause we're opening after business.
Sure, I guess we technically open, you go open the warrant tomorrow and it closes seven days later.
Yeah, we open up tomorrow, we have business hours for the town.
So, I mean, we're open late on Tuesday, so people can come in, it's seven, well, six fifty-eight.
Do I think we need to set the, the actual, when it closes?
Well, it's seven days from the day we open, so if you open tomorrow, it closes seven days.
So are you gonna send something out to, in writing to the Mariner?
Yeah, I'll see, I'll grab Amanda, I think she's downstairs at the alternative.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think, I think she's at alternative energy tonight.
So right, I mean, are you gonna issue something to the committee? Could you make sure we get copied, I wanna get copied on that. I'd like to see the dates myself.
Can, um, is, is there a motion to open the warrant for town meeting as of the ninth of September two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Any further discussion? All those in favor of a motion, say hi.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Alright, moving along to licenses and permits. We have, uh, did you say October or September? I thought I said October.
Yeah.
October si-, uh, oh, I'm sorry, no.
Right, so we're opening the warrant.
Opening the warrant, September nine, tomorrow.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so.
The motion is.
Open the warrant tomorrow.
That's what he said, nine-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Where's your board's meeting?
Alright. Um, next item up is, uh, a request for approval of change of Sunday hours for a taste of wine ink. Um, and the original piece that I saw in the packet on this, I can't find. What are we changing it to?
Ten o'clock on Sundays from eleven.
What is that?
The state changed it.
State changed what was, what's allowable, right?
Right.
Okay. Alright, is there any discussion on this? Essentially, that the licensee is simply asking to align their hours with what's legally permissible?
Just curiosity, how many of these licenses like this do we have in town? Do you know, happen, off the top of my head?
I got a list hanging over there on my corporate. Full liquor stores?
Yeah, which is what this is, right?
Yeah.
Full liquor stores, I believe we only have two.
It would be on there, it's either two or three, if you want.
And how many are allowed?
We have, we have three licenses, but two operate.
Correct, correct.
So we have three, what do we, by law, can issue three licenses?
Based on population.
Population.
So what, what is our allowable, do you happen to know?
That's, that's, we're at, three is the max. In fact, I think we were given an extra one at one point.
So we're allowed three full liquor licenses, and they are in, operating now? And do the other two?
No, no, two are operating.
Well, they're all held, they're all issued. Two stores are operating, one is still in search of a home.
The one that we just, okay. Um, so they, are they opening at ten then? The, the other one is?
So Curtis's, yes.
So Curtis is already opening at ten?
Yes. And it's actually not an approval, I think it's just a signature, and it goes to ABC State.
That they can do it? Yeah, they have to just review this?
Yeah, so we send that form to them after nine?
It's like a license.
Did we already give Curtis a pool, just to ensure that? We did it already somewhere? Or probably when we issued their license, I think?
So, so here it has, has three retail package stores. It has five restaurant, wine and malt, and all alcohol restaurants, there's a total of fourteen, there's nine out of the total that are allowed. So they're not all filled.
Is that again there?
So there are, there's.
The three, three retail package stores.
Those are filled.
Which was the answer, answer to your question.
Those are filled, then what is the nine?
Those are restaurants.
Restaurants.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any new ones that can exist.
No, just actually one coming in, in October for the great.
From the state, one more?
With somebody that's.
Are you kidding me? It's gonna be open.
We just got all the information last week, so.
Good.
So that's the first one in a while, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
And we have five available all alcohol restaurants?
Those are restaurants, though.
I can, you know, I can tell you a list if you want, I'll send it over.
Folks, let's, uh, I mean, if there's, that, this is a, a side discussion, apart from the central item. Is there, uh, is there further question, comment, or prospective request of the licensee?
Nope.
Uh, we allow the local lines and gourmet wine shop to open at ten o'clock in accordance to the master plan.
It's, it's a taste of wine and spirits, that's not the right, uh, so the, the, the retail operating hours, um, that we're motioning to approve, um, would be a change for a taste of wine and spirit thing.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
So I'll make the motion.
Alright.
Okay, if it's fully voted, it doesn't, what it meant, it doesn't say ten o'clock here, it just says.
It's on the.
Would you, uh, before?
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'll draw my motion. Thank you.
Alright.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Could you make the motion?
I did, didn't I? Yeah, you, you, the, the motion is to, um, from our point, whatever we have to do, approve. We're not approving the happening of it, but we're approving that they can apply, authorizing the application, from our point of view, for a taste of wine and spirit to alter their opening hours on Sunday.
Second?
Right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signs of favor. Alright. Next, uh, next item on the agenda is the, um, is a, is a budget discussion encompassing two items. First and foremost is fiscal forecasting, which I'm going to turn over to Chris, followed by a review of a draft of the budget message for fiscal year seventeen.
So last year, I just, um, I had begun what I call fiscal forecasting forums. We did several of them, we had some good conversations, I think it helped vet a lot of issues. Um, and I, I think there was a general consensus that it was a good idea, but I've also been asked by a cross-section of folks to consider formalizing a little bit more, to ensure that there are people at the table. And by the way, I'm not locked into this, the reason that big word draft is across this, cause, you know, I think it's, you know, the, the, the format is adaptable as we go, so let me just walk you through this. So I'm proposing I do something similar with a little bit of tweaks. Uh, five sessions are scheduled. We can do more for the fall, starting on October first, and every other Thursday, basically, the first of fifteen, twenty-ninth of October, twelfth of November, and the third of December. Might tweak that twelfth to the nineteenth, you know, we could change a little bit, uh, but Thanksgiving fits in there too, so we have to be careful. I don't think, I think we just wanna come to a meeting on Thanksgiving Day, after the football game, I guess we meet at the football game.
Yeah, I'd be too sleepy.
The, um, the tentative schedule would include the first, the furry first kickoff meeting would be discussing the five-year forecast, how we close that fifteen, what the sixteen projections are looking like, uh, and then review the content of future meetings. I have some just topics, and I've talked with other folks about topics, but these are just some thoughts. School and town population trends, we have not done anything formal on that in a while, and I think school population trends are something kind of important to talk about. Uh, growth and assessments, which is also something we need to talk about, that's the foundation of our entire revenue stream. Uh, meals tax, hotel motel tax, the advisory committee has just, has expressed an interest in beginning that conversation again. Um, the state aid, obviously, we, we should have an ongoing conversation about that, you know, school and unrestricted local aid being the most important, but not the only places. And, uh, we tried to, we did get Garrett Bradley in for a little bit, I think if we'd get him a little earlier, he has no election this year. We'll be able to get him in for a little longer time and have a bigger conversation, or somebody else from the state to talk with us. Uh, the master planning process might be a topic just to talk about, cause it is so important to everything else and how we might go forward. And then, uh, I think a review of some of the major infrastructure needs might be something else we wanna talk about, just so we understand where we're going. In the long term, there's going to be some real big conversations that are starting this year into the next, probably five. Um, and it's not just town hall, it's the public safety building, it's roads, whatever, sewer, having conversations. I know they're funded separately, but it's still important to talk about. And of course, I, I posted here, but you know, we're looking ahead at school innovations, you know, you always wanna be looking five years down the road at least. You look longer than that, but, you know, we're gonna need to, you know, there's the roofs, and there's eight, the boilers, and things of that nature. Um, the, the group could be of a variety of sizes, but I think it's important whether they're one rep or two, that the four major committees have a representative, it's selectmen, advisory, school committee, and capital, to what I'm calling a working group. Not a committee per se, but a, a working group. And, and, well, anyone can come and anyone can take part. This formalizes that at least these committees will most certainly be at every meeting, so there's a conversation.
Who were those committees again, please?
Selectmen, advisory, oh geez, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You're in the dark.
And one goes to Tracy.
Just guess.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kevin, I didn't realize you had that.
Not your fault.
My point.
I remember.
I was trying to write the dates down too.
Somebody's doodling in the center of the table.
Um, the school committee and the capital advisory committee. Um, and then staff would include the superintendent, the school business manager, the director of finance, the treasurer collector, probably the director of assessment, at least a part of the discussions, uh, and, you know, obviously I'm in that, I didn't put myself down in there, but that's obvious. The primary purpose of, of this, the working group we do, just ensure engagement of the core groups in the discussion. It's, it's not to have, you know, it just, just to have, make sure that people at the table, and people came last year. But I think it's important just to have everyone commit to having a voice at the table. And I'm not committed to one, the one, one point, it, it can't be more than, it, it has to be a sub-majority of the board, that's all. You can't have more than.
So are you asking each of these committees to make sure someone's in attendance?
Yes, at least one at every meeting, because, again, I, I, well, and, and again, it's for, for, to engage in public conversation, also to discuss what we wanna talk about. I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I obviously wanna drive the discussion, but I most certainly don't have all the answers on that. So, again, advisors already come up and said, hey, we really wanna talk about non-property tax revenue issues, particularly the meals tax and perhaps hotel motel tax. Okay, well, we can tee that up and have that conversation, do some research, and, you know, some other folks have talked about cash flow analysis, and we've talked about, um, stress testing, and we've talked about, um, you know, the population trends. And I talked to someone else about maybe, you know, doing some deep dive analysis, not necessarily this fall, but teeing it up and, and, you know, and coming up with a more of a deep dive. And even, we're talking about OPEB, OPEB's an ongoing conversation. I mean, uh, you know, I, I think the, the goal would be to begin and end with a five-year forecast, so we start with it, we talk about the aspects of it, the things that go into it, so we end with a five-year forecast, you know, by November, or at the very latest, early December, so we're, there's a, there's a consensus, well, here's what we're talking about, we get it, we understand it, here's where we are. That way the budgets will, as they slide into place, in December, January, they're, they're hanging on the hook of the forecast. Uh, and again, I think these conversations can also take place in June. After town meeting, probably not a bad idea to have a conversation and maybe meet once or twice as the year wraps up and say, okay, we're, here's where we are, here's where we're going, and, you know, other, this is similar to what the, uh, other committees have done for a long time, I think it builds up, we've already done. Um, and I think, I think, you know, I gotta also, I want input on this, I, I, but I think I've talked to a lot of people from a cross-section, and they all, I think they all agree they like these open public meetings, they like the semi-formality of it, but they want to be, oh, this, let me say, the informality, but they want it to be a little more semi-formal, so to say, okay, whether it be two members, again, I'm, I'm, I'm open to any of that. But at least having every committee send somebody on a regular basis to engage in the conversation, at least at least four. And again, it might be important to have somebody from water or sewer in a conversation, maybe somebody from planning in the conversation, or somebody from, uh, you know, if the board of health was doing some big initiative and they wanted some big funding, you know, what if we had a, I don't wanna say anything, cause all the stuff they deal with tends to be dark, darker. But let's say they want to do a big public education, kind of melanoma thing, that might be something that we wanna have at the table to talk about. You know, so maybe we, after everybody, we've actually been rolling out sunscreen, I know, if you, you know, so, during the farmers markets, Susan, Susan, our health agent, did a wonderful job of, and very good one, for the public health, there's a, educating function, the pool and the beach, showing people how to put sunscreen, and, um, in infrastructure, you know, having a bigger, I mean, infrastructure, obviously, when you, when you kick in the tires, it goes to capital and advisory, but, um, we're teeing up this fall into the spring a series of bigger conversations about making investments, I mean, this building obviously being one example, but it's not the only one, Miami means, and we have to make sure that funding is there in the future to pay for that. So, is that?
I think it sounds great.
Sounds great.
And I think after the first meeting, you know, when we discuss topics, we can, we'll probably identify, you know, maybe there's a, a meeting where we invite whatever, the, the board of health, or this, or that, or that, to, to, to really talk about stuff that isn't always as clearly on our radar.
Yep.
But is, is within this building's radar.
I, I think that's, that's, and I figure, you know, we could, we could do more meetings, if people really get excited and wanna come out. I remember last year, we, we wrapped a couple of them in an hour and a half, and we just kept hanging out.
Yeah.
It's like, you can go home.
We like this stuff.
And a lot of people just went to go home. Uh, by the way, they're gonna be at the community room. Number one, cause it's, it's open. Uh, it also has AV capability, and if we wanted to record the meetings, we could. I, I, I don't, we don't need to broadcast them live, but if we wanted to record.
Oh, yeah, I'll see if cable will record them, cause they can, everything maybe. Um, so how do you visualize the meeting going? Is this something, cause the public's gonna be invited, so is this gonna be, are they gonna be observing people at, at, at a table discussing? Or do you?
No, I, I think everyone will be open to having, you know, I, I, I would, you know, I, I think if, if, um, I think we'll have to see how it goes. I, 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 I don't, I, I, I think having some groups committed to participating is critical, so that we ensure that the key, the key agencies for spending and review of spending are at the table. But I think, you know, anyone who wants to come and participate is.
So everybody, you know, is.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, you know, I, I wouldn't say it's first of all impulse, but, you know, I wanna make sure that the boards that have to vote on this at the end of the day are at the table, so they, I wanna engage as many folks in the process as early as possible.
And this would help considerably in you formulating, guiding, guiding the formulation of the budget. And actually, anybody who's interested in the entire budget can see where the priorities are and hear fruitful discussion on these issues, that's fine. Now, I, I've been hearing, you know, I have heard, as you had said, that, you know, a number of people wanna see this, so I think this is good. People, people, I think, you know, wanna see this, and it's be favorably, favorably received.
We did, you know, one of the things that had, came out of last year, we did a number of paragraphs, they're all gonna post on the website. So even if you couldn't come, you can see what we talked about. And, you know, we had very, you know, after having had literally months of conversation, by the time we got to town meeting, people were like, okay, we get it. I mean, people did ask questions, as they should, they have the right to, but we spent a lot of time in advance asking questions and answering them as much as we could. I think that's a really helpful thing, and also raising questions you might not have thought about, that's part of this too. It's like, well, maybe we really need to focus on this. Oh, I haven't really thought about that, okay, let's prioritize and have that conversation more. Or maybe, hey, we really wanna look at this, it's gotta take some weeks to do, or some plans, or maybe we could, you know, so let's talk about that. And again, we have great talent, I mean, the. And again, we have great talent, I mean, the OPEB was fabulous in many ways. One of the most underrated ways publicly is the brain work that went into grinding through some of these statistics. I know there's folks who really want to deep dive, look, if you people want to deep dive and come over the model or something, happy to do it.
I mean, you know, one thing with that first meeting, there's an awful lot of things that are in there. One person might be helpful in having Garrett Bradley show up for it.
First meeting?
Yeah, just look at it, I mean, state aid, population trends.
No, no, that's not, oh, no, 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 that's not, these are topics for future meetings, that's not, that's not for the first one. No, the first meeting is just the five-year forecast.
Probably, I would say, you know, potentially maybe at the state aid meeting or the infrastructure needs, to have him show up for a couple things. He would probably know if there's money's available, what is available from the point of view of the state aid and so that meeting, and then the major infrastructure needs. You know, there's one thing as far as the public safety building, if that's in the plans for five, ten years down the road, the location where it's going to be citing it. And there is one piece of property up the hill where the, I guess it was a big sports complex is, just shy of that on the left is a Department of Transportation building, they store the boats there. From a location point, I spoke to the police chief and the fire chief, and said that's a relatively, you know, good spot from access, three A down, check out. Whether he would have any ideas about land swaps for that part of town, or if there's any other state land in the area that may be potential.
Primo land, I almost don't even realize it's there, but believe me, if the state ever wanted to park with that, I think we'd be first up on it. They do use it pretty heavily.
Yeah, he may know, but we could, you know, if you're going to park a boat, you can park a boat.
We actually, we're talking about signing a radio repeater tower up there.
Right, and that's going to take a small, it's like a hundred square foot piece of property.
Yeah, it's not very good there.
But he may know other people in the state that know of locations and land that's in the town, and we don't know, don't have access to it, go home.
A secret bunker and motorcade that's still there.
I would very much like for our elected representatives at the state levels to change the name from state aid to something like returning our tax money, that would be kind.
Revenue sharing?
No, not revenue sharing, we already gave it up, I'd just like to get some of it proportionally.
Investment in the community.
It's aid, good heavens. All right. Thank you, Chris, this is great of you. Let's, let's plan, again, a very brief time allotment for the next meeting to assign folks from the board's selectmen to participate in this.
I mean, everyone could come, I understand, but, but we have to be careful about if it's going to be deliberation, which is at least some sort of conversation we got to post that isn't.
And we could designate each meeting, one of us, you know, all of them, me one.
Or you can also come and not talk, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, but we could designate a different person each time.
Have you ever seen any of us sit and not talk?
I have no problem, if it becomes, if there's such a great demand, I have no problem, you know, increasing that number, we can just figure it out. How are you getting the posting?
I love to go off of this chit chat, but I really want to know this a lot.
We're good.
Let's, let's review the draft budget message for fiscal year seventeen. Each of us had the sixteen draft uploaded, seventeen draft in a spate of confusion, was not uploaded until early today, so you may be looking at it for the first time. All right. The bullet points on this are as follows. The basis of a budget message is to lay out the budget priorities from the board to the town manager, to assist the town manager as he drafts, drafts a proposed budget. All right, so this begins to encompass our principles, objectives, and the like, to be used as a broad guideline by the town manager. This is a public document, so it's relevant to include some background information as well as explanatory language as to why the proposed objectives are listed as they are. So, by the way, for public consumption, those, those objectives as part of the budget message are adhere to the financial management policies adopted in two thousand and twelve. Number two, allow, use the allowable tax levy. Number three, to establish capital priorities and a plan for funding the same. Number four, budget for delivery of townwide services equivalent to those of the preceding fiscal year within available revenue sources. Produce said services with budget transparency and customer service orientation. And number five, continue to develop a reliable and professional human resources function. Those are the five elements drafted so far. The intent of this document is to provide a starting point, not a finishing point, and I recognize again that because of a screw-up here, meaning from the drafty, drafter?
Author.
I had sent this out last week, but interestingly enough, the office did not receive it today. So, I believe Tracy's already placed a phone call to our IT people asking what's going on. So, long and short of it is, if you haven't received, you haven't had a chance to review it, I'm not surprised, but we absolutely want to get this concluded. We, we start the budget process with the budget message. So, if we do not conclude this seemingly, then we need to get it done for our next meeting.
Just a comment, which is more for public consumption than anything, it pretty much mirrors the objectives from last year, so.
Many of them do.
While they're, the language might have changed, or some of the details within the goals, I think it's pretty much similar to what we talked about last year.
The basis for this, which interestingly enough, last year's document wasn't far removed from the initial one that was written. The first budget message was written two fiscal years prior. And these, by definition, the document itself is not intended to be revolutionary, but evolutionary, because you don't want to be recreating the budget anymore, right? But as an example, there are some fundamental differences. The last two years, the language with respect to the tax levy was use the maximum available tax levy. This one's usually allowable tax levy. And if you read through this, there's a basis for it. Ohio has long endured sustained fiscal pressure due to our narrow tax base and desire to maintain independence in core services. As well, we've needed to address liabilities previously unrecognized on the town's balance sheet open, while maintaining our infrastructure and capital investment. The last several years have allowed us to aggressively rebuild our depleted reserves as variable revenues recovered from multi-year lows. We do not envision that this trend requirement requiring us for the time being to depend upon using the available levy increase in our plan. Still, the opportunity exists to find methods to reduce our expenses such that the tax levy increase is not treated as a fatal component. We believe that, like every other organization, we should seek efficiencies of services where available. Accordingly, we find it fiscally prudent to maintain our levy increase at two and a half percent, maintain a unified tax rate, and continue to review user fees for consistency at a given value. So the basis here is to recognize once again that we have continued to throttle headlong into the assumption that we are going to raise our taxes at the maximum level year after year after year, and yet we have never once entertained the thought process that said, well, how do we do it otherwise? How could we take less than the maximum levy? How might that happen? Because ultimately, we sit and talk about affordable housing here, I think this is Affordable to home, because eventually, you are going to have a monogamous society in this town, only the people who can afford to pay taxes that continue to compound at two and a half percent per year. Which, by the way, if you do the math, comes out to a four percent average over ten years. Okay, that's, that's not, that's not sustainable to a broad-based community, and I do believe it's time to start having that discussion.
So one thing, just sort of that hints at, and I don't know where we might want to put this, where we might want to open up the language a little bit to, to put this in, should we decide we want to go this direction, which is finding other revenue sources like the hotel and meals tax. So, so this addresses the levy, and while, well, while we have to talk about obviously expenses, you know, I think we should consider other ways, it notes user fees, but are there other ways, are there other revenue sources beyond the tax levy that we haven't addressed in this budget message, should we decide through our budget planning process that we might want to actually revisit that idea? So is this the place to put it, or?
I think the budget message is probably not the place to put any specific prescription for that, other than recognizing that there is the, there are other possible revenue sources, but the fact of the matter is, we have not even begun to recognize what we can do for ourselves with respect to efficiencies. Let's say, three years into this, we're, I mean, we're seven years away from the abyss, remember? Okay? Remember, nothing exists prior to oh nine, those books are closed, never to be reopened.
Right.
Okay, so it's not like we've hit for the cycle and we can pat ourselves on the back and say, okay, now let's go look for money coming from somewhere else, because eventually, you're still taking it out of the citizens' pockets.
I don't disagree, I just, and I didn't mean to suggest that we would actually put in a meals tax or anything like that in here, but just to, just to open up this language a little bit to say, explore other potential revenue options or something like that.
Again, this is, this is a starting point, and it's a message from the board, not a message from the author.
Right.
So, that's, that's, that's what I want to make clear about this.
And I, and I do want to say, just, I do think the last couple of years, we have explored efficiencies in expenses, I don't think it's something that we haven't ever, you know, backed away from, I think, to your point, we need to be much more proactive about it, but I would, I think we've done a pretty good job.
There are steps that have been taken, for certain.
Thank you.
There are, and let's be clear that I am, in writing this, I'm not intending to ignore those steps, but I, you know, we're talking about being three steps into a thousand mile journey.
I get it.
So, let's continue those. But, I'm sorry, back to what you were asking about. Yeah, absolutely, as I said, this is a starting point, I respect it, and recognize that none of you have had the opportunity to review this, so please, review it, add your commentary and the like, and, I'm sorry, you're next, but Chris had motioned prior that he wanted to say something.
Yeah, I would just say that, looking at the fiscal forecast and the forms, in there is a meals tax, hotel motel tax, fees are not added in it, but certainly the meals tax and hotel motel tax could easily be incorporated, should that go through the process there, we certainly could add in there saying there are other options, not just tax levy that would involve taxes that may or may not be.
Just keep in mind, while, while the message can ask for that exploration, the fact of the matter is, this is to be used by the town manager to develop a budget, it can't be contingent, the budget can't be contingent. You can't go to the town meeting saying, this is my budget, so long as you pass the deals.
But let's say it goes through the tentative meeting here, and there's, we're all to support at that meeting, and.
That's, that's just us talking to ourselves, there is no support for this until it gets to town meeting and it gets a vote.
Exactly right.
And that's why I say, and I don't mean to be hypercritical about the prescription, taking the language and saying, let's explore what's, what's available to us, is legitimate. But that's a message for development of the budget, it's not a prescription that says, develop the budget contingent upon the passage of the meals tax.
No.
Okay?
I agree. The, I think it would be worthwhile to broaden the adherent financial management policies, to all of, we've adopted a number in the last couple of years, so I wouldn't limit it to the ones that were adopted in two thousand and twelve. We've adopted cash management, we've adopted debt management.
I'm sorry, the adopted two thousand and twelve was the core policies, the aspirational policies are pursuing a triple-lip laundering. You're right, now that was, that was, that's referencing the core policies. That's fair enough.
There's more coming down the pike, so I'm not, I actually, one of the things coming out of GFOA, I looked at, some people have accepted these like booklets of policies.
No, it's, look, that's fine, the, in total, they've, they've tightened up the operations and.
They're foundational, I mean, and which is fabulous, I mean, you can't get to the next place until you've been someplace before.
One of the points that is in the preamble is recognizing that for many years, the auditor's management letter sat on a shelf, no one ever reviewed it, and it identified time after time after time that there were, you know, there were missing policies that opened us up for the potential for fraud, the potential for, you know, misapplication of resources, essentially, the potential to simply be wasteful with taxpayer funds. And simply acknowledging many of, the existence and the continuity of those letters has gone a long way toward stepping out of a very difficult period and into something that is, I would argue, as solid financially as this town has seen in several decades. But that's the moment in time, and ideally, the budget message, year after year after year, will support those principles and begin to advance other foundation pieces that will be required for advancing the longer-term objectives, not only of this specific budget in the upcoming year, but for many budgets, you know, many, many decades of budgets to come. So, yeah, no, it doesn't, it does not change remarkably year to year, but there is nuance that I tried to write into it, there is, in all likelihood, specific elements that each of you would like to see brought forward, and I would like to hear what those are for the entire board to consider.
So we'll, we'll have this again on our next agenda.
Yes, we will need to review this and be ready with commentary, let's, let's plan on putting it to bed at our, at our next meeting, so that we can keep with our timeline of having a budget message issued by the end of the month.
Yeah.
If we have commentary on this, should we send it to the board around, or rather than sort of spring commentary, you know, to make our meeting more efficient next week, you know? Will we review this, shall we?
Well, Clark, what do you think?
Tell me, you're in the chair.
No, 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 what do you think is the best, is the best way to collect commentary?
I don't think it's, I don't know that it's, I don't think we should share it amongst ourselves, to everybody, I think that could border on over-meanness.
Apart from that, I'm thinking mechanically, what is the best way to collect this?
I think mechanically.
Yeah, we can't, we can't really share it, because we would be, you know, be over-meanness.
You can send it to the office, we can compile it, then have it for distribution.
Right, we, I mean, there's going to be, like, already, there's, there's some sort of grammatical kind of things that we can just, call Tracy up or something, and it's easy, but if there's, if there's issues that we want to discuss, it might be worth sending them to Tracy, she can just keep a running tally, and then we can each bring our own up at the meeting next week.
Grammatical, grammatical items Tracy can address and correct. I'm, I'm more concerned immediately about substantive contributions, or deletions.
I mean, I think you're going to have to, on your own, come up with your idea.
Do we have a copy of this? I didn't get, we're going to have a copy of this, so we can, in Word form, we can, because it'd be easy for me to work on that copy.
Tracy can give it to you.
You know what I mean, so I can try to work within this form. And so then, yeah, we'll come next, we, generally, we're probably going to have four or five, so we'll comment on these, or add or subtract any we want, or whatever, and just make our proposal, and vote on it, and go on.
I think that makes no sense.
Yeah, no, that sounds fine with me, it's, it's an important discussion. Do we get feedback from any other source on this, like advisory?
The message, I mean, advisory gives us feedback ultimately on the budget elements on its own, but the message itself is the leadership message from the board, and that's, that's the basis for it. So, as an example, maybe the board says, you know what, above all else. So as an example, maybe the board says, you know what, above all else, we want to move two capital projects forward. I don't want Silver Street, the construction of. No, it was actually, you know.
Public safety.
A, a public safety annex on Route three A. Those, those, well, that would go into the budget message. Now, the commentary is going to come back from the advisory committee looking at both the budget and the proposals. And they're going to come forward and advise the board. But the, the, the direction on how to develop the budget comes from.
Will come from us, yeah. And it's direction, essentially, guidance that we're giving to the town manager?
Yes, town manager.
So it isn't, it isn't cast in law. It's, it's, we're going to agree upon or make a vote on it, I assume we'll agree, agree on it and discuss it, and then we'll probably vote on it. And this is essentially our message. But it's not like four months from now, we're going to say, you didn't do number four, you've broken the rules.
Well, think of it, if, if our message, if our message goes forward and says, use, use a, a two percent of the two and a half percent maximum tax increase. And Chris comes back and says, I can do that, but it means I've got to cut back, you know, three people from this department, two people from that department and, and four from over there. That's the most efficient way I can do it and it's going to reduce services. What he's essentially saying is, that conflicts with keeping level services, all right? So he's giving us feedback on our direction.
Yeah, so we'll just put out his, it's an iterative thing.
The framework, right.
So we want to give, yep, I get the picture.
And they, they're all very global, you know? There's nothing really directing any specific thing to happen.
No, there is, the.
Play by the rules. Don't increase taxes.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's a, a principled direction of the budget development.
Sounds good.
All right. And just one other quick thing with the, we mentioned about the taxes. The state revenues have triggered now with the five required necessary achievements for lowering of the income tax out of January first. So unless it's catastrophic change on the revenues of the state as of January first, there'll be a tax, income tax decline of point zero five percent. It's about a hundred million from the state. So I suspect that the local paid, the cities and towns in the chapter seventy ninety ones may be less available than, if it's not going to.
I will bet you, one of two things happens.
Hoping that growth is more. Growth is more.
Number, number one is that, that the growth will be higher than expected. Or number two is somehow, some way, our legislature again will find a way to circumvent it.
Possibly.
Stay tuned.
But, but as of now, the last two years has clipped and so I suspect it may be that around this year as well.
Keep your fingers crossed that it doesn't happen that way. That we, that we actually don't have a, a reduction.
Something like shit in the air, I, I wouldn't find it surprising.
Tell you, it's real.
Good point. Thank God for election cycles.
All right. Then we, we can table, table this item until, continue this item until next, next meeting, at which time, the objective is to finalize the budget message. All right. We have one other item stated on the agenda, and that is minutes for eight twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes and board's clock at nine twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any further comment? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Final item is topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in the meeting, I have none. And so with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.